Good afternoon. Good afternoon and welcome to a special combined meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health. It is four twelve P M on Monday, October seventeenth. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This agenda is subject to revisions and additions prior to the meeting. Since it is a joint meeting, I will call the Board of Selectmen to order, and then Ms. Katavia, if you could do the same for the Board of Health. With that being said, Mr. Pacheco?
Present.
Mr. Karen?
Present.
Chairman Leonard Hall is also present. Ms. Katavia.
I'd like to open this meeting of the Board of Health before sixteen P M, October seventeenth. Well, to order, and our president also.
Thank you.
Selectmen.
Thank you very much. With that being said, Mr. Mullin? I believe.
Yes, so.
I have an introduction.
We met, we've. We really level set in and we'll discuss the different options that have been brought up for the Board of Health. When we met, we also discussed that we reached out to Mass Association of Health Boards and to ask them, like, for their help. Really helping guide us forward. With us, we have Mike Kukow, who is the Director of Policy for the Association of Health Boards. We also have Cheryl Sabara, the Executive Director of the Association, who will be joining us as well. They came with a PowerPoint presentation that they were hoping to be able to present. Oh, you know, oh, yeah, really, like, I think Mike will, you know, really, so, yeah, like, so, yeah, really. We're not the only town that's going through the challenges that we're going through. Oh, yeah, the challenges that we're going through, you know, like, being recognized. So, like, having recognized by the legislature, by the Department of Public Health as well, like that. And so, so I think the timing that we're coming together to do this, I'm actually, I think, really trying to fix it with, like, a broader overall strategy. Really, that has started before, you know, pre-pandemic, but the pandemic really altered a lot of the type of role facing. And so, yeah, we are very excited about the expertise, you know, really showing us some help in the process.
Thank you. I'll just start off by just a little background. Well, I expect Cheryl any second, but I'm really going to hers if I have. But we'll leave it at that. My familiarity with this, with your town, it comes to killing the Public Health Excellence Grant together and forming its route. That you eventually formed with people there. And I've been meeting regularly with Mr. Mullin, and both have been attending the meetings for the past couple of months religiously. And we've been meeting, what, pretty much every single week, right? Even if it's only for a couple of minutes, as we check here. I watched, I watched the proceedings from October third yesterday. One hour and forty-three minutes, but I spent like three and a half hours. I took copious notes. I took pages upon pages of notes that I took from it. And there's, there's a couple of things that I think we should start out with before we get into our prepared remarks for today. First of all, your town was part of round three, the Public Health Excellence Grant. There were two rounds that started about two years ago, and you're part of the, now it's a round four that's way, way, way behind. But the round three towns, everybody's pretty much in the same exact location. Most of them have not hired a shared services coordinator yet, which would precede having hiring the other, the other elements of the grants. The inspectors or whoever else it is that you all decide that you want to hire. It's really the decisions that are being made on a day-to-day basis on the grant are being made by the health departments, by the Boards of Health. And their agents show up for these weekly meetings, and I'm presuming that the Boards of Health are being kept up to speed on, on what's going on at these meetings. But the fact that, one of the things that was said yesterday with, yes, I'm sorry, I watched, one of the things I saw on the recording yesterday was that there's a feeling that the grant is dragging, and that's, that's absolutely correct when it comes to this round. I actually sort of have a little, little side getting that I'm doing. I'm the shared services coordinator for the grant on the islands, Martha's Vineyard and Nantucket. And on, on the island, Martha's Vineyard is six towns, six Boards of Health, eighteen Board of Health members, six Health Directors, and Boards of Selectmen tell the Health Directors, hey, why are you wasting our taxpayer money by talking to the people from Chilmark? You should be dealing with our town over there. So that's the mentality that we walk into, that I walk into, to try to get them to participate in the grant. That grant is very high priority. That grant has, has a full-time, well, very part-time shared service coordinator. A full-time community health worker, a inspector, and in that, in that case, they hired a biologist because they have a tick and a huge issue with Lyme disease affecting the whole environment of all islands. So that, that's an example of what this way had. That grant at this point has had a, has invested twenty thousand dollars in anti-racism training for the summer camps. They had an incident two summers ago where a couple of white campers decided it would be kind of cool to tie a noose around the black camper's neck and tie it to a post. And the camp's whole response was, hey, that's not a good thing to do, which was a very insufficient response. So now the Boards of Health on the island have put together with the grant running, the training that they gave to all of the camp councils and directors at the beginning of the season. And now they're doing the statistical work to see what the effects were. It was a very successful program. And in addition to that, they have put together a community health survey for all of the citizens of both islands. It's always been said that one in five has a substance disorder on the island, but nobody has any statistics, so they're developing that. So that's where the grant can go, and I'm just using that to show you where this grant can go in the future. The inspector actually has been poached already. We found a brand-new, out-of-college biology graduate who came in and wanted to become involved in public health, but the grant couldn't pay her enough money. And the town of Engertown poached her from the grant, so we're, we're thinking about hiring someone else, but we're not going to do it yet until after the capacity assessment that I'm going to talk about when I get into my prepared remarks. So you're not really behind the curve. That's the most important thing I want to start out with, is that the grant is, the grant is going to catch up. You will catch up to where rounds one and two are. Cheryl Sabara.
Good afternoon.
I'm just telling you now, I've got a slide, and you're going to do the first few. All right, so that is a backdrop, just so that you're not sitting here thinking, well, jeez, this is all wonderful, but we're in the picture. You're right when you shouldn't. There were, there were seven or six new grants that were put together in round three. You're one of six. Nobody's ahead of you. And we'll talk about why that's a good thing in a couple of minutes, but I put together these are. And you can advance them with this.
Okay, first of all, I know some of you did not follow this. I am Cheryl Sabara. I am Senior Staff Attorney and Executive Director of the Mass Association of Health Boards. I'm sorry I'm repeating this for some of you, but we are a not-for-profit membership association. We provide assistance in legal education, not legal advice. Your town council provides you with legal advice to the three hundred and fifty-one local Boards of Health in Massachusetts. We've been in operation since the early eighties, and I have been with M H B the past twenty-two years. So we're going to talk a little bit about what the local public health system looks like in Massachusetts and what we're aspiring to through the Special Commission's blueprint on local and regional public health excellence. And we're going to talk about how that is being implemented strategically through the Department of Public Health and the Department of Environmental Protection at the request and urging of the state legislature. And we'll also talk about how it's being funded, the implementation of this. So I'm going to have to, that's, okay. So local public health combines so many areas of expertise. It is pretty astounding when you look at what local public health is charged with in, by the legislature, through statutes and through state regulations. Local public regulations and the local bylaws that also address public health. So the ones I'm familiar with, I'll start, I'll start at like one o'clock with environmental health. That's what, you know, Boards of Health are charged with protecting public health, and that includes protecting our food system, our septic system, our pools. Things that are basically encompassed in the state sanitary. We're also responsible for letting the state know about and controlling infectious diseases. We're all very familiar with that over the past couple of years with COVID nineteen. We are also charged with addressing through outreach, through prevention programs, through solid interventions, substance disorders, tobacco control, and other mental health issues. You see it a lot from a board of health perspective when you're looking at hoarding issues in your town.
I'm sorry, hoarding?
Hoarding issues within your town, because hoarding issues really stem initially from a mental health issue. So, and these are all things that are within our statutory regulatory obligations as they exist right now. These aren't new issues. These exist right now. Emergency preparedness, probably very familiar with because of the grants that come into hospital medical board meeting coalition and stand through your own emergency preparedness work. Organizations, again, COVID brought that right center for us. Community health and prevention, this is something that a lot of people are unaware of, but what the Center for Disease Control and Prevention is charged Boards of Health with these kinds of prevention and preventives to encourage health meeting and active living, which clearly affect our healthcare system and the money that we spend on healthcare because of many diseases. If we concentrate on helping. Policy development, that's when you're thinking of enacting regulations. I know you are considering some state regulations. I saw on the agenda, your tobacco control regulations, any regulations you have on Title V. And that would also include all of your permits, your tobacco sale permit, your food service permits. Any kind of permits would also be considered into that policy development realm. Health education and outreach. That often results in some of the issues that we have, especially hoarding issues, and then data analysis and reporting. I left that one for last because that's a challenge not only for local Boards of Health, but it's also going to challenge for the Department of Public Health. When we on the Special Commission, I was one of the folks on the Special Commission, and I was on the subcommittee that was looking at data. And we went to the Department of Public Health to try to ascertain what data they actually had, so we could get some sort of baseline. Like, where are we now, and what do we need to improve? We couldn't figure out where we were at the beginning of this endeavor, because the data was all over the place, it was housed in different places. Some of the data, one of the most astounding things to me was the food service data, the restaurant inspections. There was, there's a requirement that restaurant inspection data be given back to the Department of Public Health. Well, what the department was, was collecting, some municipalities gave it back, some didn't. And when they gave it back, it was just a form that said, we inspect these. It didn't say what the violations were, what the follow-up was. So it was, it was useless for determining a baseline. What we figured out in that subcommittee was the baseline was we didn't have one. So that, that was the initial funding that went to local public health. Really went to the Department of Public Health and the Department of Environmental Protection, so that they could create a data system that actually works, that produces valuable data where we can actually measure what, what we're doing. And Boards of Health locals could get that data and, you know, look at it, compare themselves to other municipalities around them, et cetera. So that's a big piece of what's, what's happening statewide and, and what we're encouraging to happen locally, so that there's a uniform data collection system. So this is one way of looking at what local public health is charged with. And again, this is just the regulatory and statutory obligations that you have. I certainly cannot see that. So I'm going to, I have it in a different form, and I'm only going to mention the next one of them. Oh, you've got it on the next slide. Okay, and I still can't see most. What, what those are, I did a slide and I pulled out some from it. So these are just some of the main obligations for local public health. You need to assure safe drinking water. We need, where's the state sanitary code, which again includes food, housing, numerous other issues in the state sanitary code, food protection laws and regulations, the housing code, septic systems and private well. Let us. About isolation and quarantine, the laws on isolation and quarantine are so old that statute says if someone is ordered to be either isolated or quarantined, he gets, he or she get their daily wages, and the amount that's set for those daily wages is two dollars. That's how old those statutes are. So we, and I'm going on a side, but M H B, our agency, figured out a way to make it easier for cities and towns to actually get to isolation and quarantine without having to go to quarantine. And medicine and biological waste, I mean, so this, this is just some of what boards are charged with. And so you can see from here just how great the knowledge base needs to be, the local public health in Massachusetts. So, as I said, we have three hundred and fifty-one local public health boards in Massachusetts, Boards of Health. And we never, until the last couple of years, had a line item in the state budget that was dedicated to health projects. We have a charity, and that gives municipalities money coming from the state, but there was no line item for Boards of Health. So essentially, whatever town meeting determined to be the budget for the health departments was what the budget was. Then there were some, there are some grants that you can apply for from the state if you have someone who can write a grant. And there are opportunities and collaboratives, like the tobacco control collaboratives. But there was no funding that was dedicated to Boards of Health coming from state taxes. So this really put us in a position where, depending upon where you lived, that really determined what public health services you were actually getting. And it could be, you could have towns, and we did a survey on this, you could have towns, each of which had a population of thirty thousand. And one town could spend six hundred thousand on, on public health, and the other could spend fifty thousand. Because it was whatever town we decided was the value of work of public health, even though public health is a core function of government. And I think we were comparing Melrose with Randolph, and they were the same size. And when we looked at the budgets, Melrose was four times as large and had four times as many staff members as Randolph did. Even though Randolph had poorer health outcomes. So, you know, it depends not only on what the town meeting allocates, but also it depends on the tax base in the municipality. So the poorer municipalities have fewer dollars to work with, and they have to decide between every other department within the municipality. So as a result of many, many local municipalities that do not meet the current statutory and regulatory requirements. And I think that it's probably there by the need to come in. So, so we have a lot that are, do that. And the Special Commission, the first part of the Special Commission, we only dealing with right now is to attempt to get every municipality to be able to perform the current required statutory and regulatory duties. We're not looking at the foundational public health services that we want to aspire to, or that we do aspire to. We're just looking at what is currently required, the local public health. So this is the commission, and it was actually a law that was enacted. It was sponsored by a representative in private in twenty sixteen, and I remember going to her office on this, and she was a Board of Health member first, and then she became a state representative, and she was also a nurse. So she was really familiar with what public health needed to do, and she came from a very well-resourced municipality. She came from, so they did a lot of proactive things. They didn't do everything because they couldn't, but they, they did a lot. So she championed this bill that was submitted to the legislature, and the legislature enacted an act to create a special commission that would look at the effectiveness and efficiency of the public health systems in existence in Massachusetts. And there were some districts, especially in the western part of the state, which has less population, bigger geography. A lot of those municipalities were working together at that time. So that's what we were charged with doing, and we were, we were appointed by the governor, and and we came from all walks of life. And one of the most interesting things about the commission was it was made up of people, not only those of us that are public health geeks, but we also had Republicans and Democrats from the legislature. We had the Mass Taxpayers Association, Karen. When she heard, when I did a presentation on what local public health looked like, her first thought was just take it away from locals and give it to the state. They're not, they can't, they can't do it. And of course, in a state that's a whole, old state, you can't, you can't take this away from locals. Plus, that doesn't work either, because the state isn't equipped to actually do what we're doing locally, where we know the people, we know the geography, we know the issues. So she had ended up, Eileen Mackey, who's been here, you know, she ended up in one of the largest proponents. She testified before the state legislature, before various committees, and she is one of our hugest supporters. That's probably not the right word, but she is a really stalwart supporter of the blueprint for public health excellence. She sees it as the only way, and what she sees from her taxpayer's point of view is that if we fix the local system, we're going to really bring down healthcare costs. And that's what, what the Mass Taxpayers Association is about. We also have a Mass Publical Association. We had a Mass Municipal Association. We had a lot of people. Administration, finance, a lot of people in the room that were not living in our local public health. And the report was, it was unanimous support for it. So we ended up with several recommendations that came out for strengthening the local public health system. And that's what these Public Health Excellence Grants are designed to do. The only thing that will be done in the realm of local public health, but they're the first thing that is, is, is being done with the money. And we have, and Mike knows this better than I do, but we have a line item, I think, of fifteen million dollars now in the most recent legislative appropriation. We never, we, we had a line item a couple of years ago. It started at, I think, one point two million, or now it's fifteen million. That doesn't go away. It may get increased. Right now, it will probably just continue to get increased because the legislature has supported all of the bills that we proposed unanimously. After COVID, they saw what local health was charged with doing and how they weren't able to do what they, what they needed to do and what they wanted to do. If they didn't have enough staff, not that they didn't have, or in some cases that they didn't have the expertise, but in a lot of cases that they needed to do, not what they needed to do. So, is it still me?
That's just three, six recommendations.
Okay, so these were the recommendations that the Special Commission outlined. Leonard, I just alluded to establishing workforce credentials. Right now, if you, if you want to be a health inspector, you just apply. There are no qualifications that accompany that position. We have health inspectors that are right out of high school. We have health inspectors that have masters in science. You know, they're just all over the place when it comes to the credentials that, that they have when they're entering. My health director, when I worked at a local Board of Health, my mom telling me the town, he was a retired butcher. He was the health director for the town. So that is one of the goals of the special, of the blueprint, is to establish some workforce credentials. There will be, and, and this is what EPA is charged for that. There will be some, some times, some instances where you can have a director or an inspector that's been in the municipality for many years, has learned through experience, there's a way to grandfather that person in, if that's what the town wants to do. Another issue is to really, sustainability is really important. We're getting a lot of folks now in the public health field that are retiring. We're seeing a lot of that, especially since the pandemic. We're looking at setting a higher standard, other than just meeting the current statutory and regulatory obligations, which is a huge lift. We also want to look at setting foundational public health services as the goal. We're looking at, as I said, data collection, and we're looking at really trying to resource Boards of Health in a way that makes sense. And we're also, we want to encourage shared public health services. We, we don't want to touch legal, of Boards of Health, that's really important, but we do want to look at better, more efficient ways of delivering services over different, you know, when we combine different municipalities, police and fire do it. We're looking at, and that's basically what the Public Health Excellence Grants are looking to do.
I guess I'll pick up from here.
Thank you for that.
I should have let her know I was doing this. All right, so building on what Cheryl was talking about, from the blueprint, there were a couple of major things that we're going to be concentrating on today. And one of them is establishing the performance standards, which was begun when the program, when the Public Health Excellence Program rolled out. And then the other is to really assess the capacity, the assessment tool itself, to assess the capacity of performance. Now, you have, you have a, you have a health agent who does a lot of Title V, a lot of the wastewater and things of that sort. There's, you saw a whole lot of circles on there that. There's, you saw a whole lot of circles on there that that can't be filled in by the current constituted health department that you have. It can't be because you don't have all of the people that are trained in those areas. You don't have the resources allocated some of those areas yet. Uh and that's uh, that's why we're really, what you're doing right now, your timing is nearly perfect to doing what you're doing. Because through this, through this program, one of the things that's going to be happening is uh there's going to be this this capacity assessment. It's already begun for for uh, have you, you haven't been you have received the capacity assessment, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's, it's a three-part setup. First part is questionnaire that went to the health agents and directors. And it involved, basically, it was a hundred and, I think, a hundred and eighty questions. It took about an hour to do, um although some people struggled and spent hours on it. But it was designed to take an hour to do, but but it was designed by people who knew nothing about this. So I'm sure it took a lot longer than an hour, right?
Well, I had to confer with like six other people to answer some of the questions. I couldn't answer them all.
So that's, but in a in an ideal world, it should take an hour. Uh but the questions really, really weren't designed to lift the Band-Aid. And just sort of let the air get to what's going on in the health departments. And uh based upon that raw data, the state will be making some determinations. You're gonna get a few of that in a second. But uh the second phase, which is ongoing right now, and actually I think the deadline is today. It was on December twelve. It was twelve or extended.
September one or the seventeen.
Okay, yeah. Which is right, the schedule was to today. And and the idea is that on on round one, it was the health directors or agents, number one person in the health department. The second round goes to everybody in town that touches on public health. So that would be everybody, that would be the board of health members, staff, number two. Uh the the health agents have to do a number two, even though they did the number one questionnaire. Uh the support staff, the administrative assistant, uh inspectors. Every single person in the town that touches on public health has to be number two. And then that's all being compiled. And the next round is that all of the documents that are being used, the regulations, the forms for inspection, everything that, every type of paper or electronic information that's collected in the town has to be pulled together and sent to the Department of Public Health. Now, it's being done by an outside agency, and that's partially by design because we're asking boards of health and health departments, not just to rip off the Band-Aid, but to really sort of, I don't want to use the word compling, but that's kind of the closest thing I can think of. This is, this is the moment where the, where the health department tells the state, this is what we can do. And we know we can't, we, nobody except maybe Boston, possibly Springfield.
No.
No, not Springfield. No, okay. But Springfield's not gonna screw it, so. But probably Boston is the is the gold standard with its with its thousand people that work in public health, with its, I don't know how many, hundreds of millions, a budget to go to Boston. Boston's not even in the questionnaire. Boston's not in the grant program. Because the idea behind the grant program and the capacity assessment is to bring all of the boats to the same tide that Boston's functioning on today. Now, that's gonna cost some money, and I'm gonna get into that in a second. So this is, this is the 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 blue towns on this map are all the towns that are now in Public Health Excellence Square. And you see Boston is gray. There's a couple of towns that have held out, actually a little pink shape um in Western Mass that's tearing them there right now. But you could see that there are three hundred and ten cities and towns, which are three hundred and fifty-one, that are in the grant program today. There are fifty grant groups. And uh this is through, this is as of, actually not as of today, or I would have had tearing them, I apologize. But that's the only exception on there. And so this is the size of of what we're talking about here. Now, what we have to do is all of these towns have to be functioning on the same, on the same level. And so some of the grant programs have have been used, as I told you before, uh with the the one I've been working on. We have an inspector, we have a community health worker. Some have hired nurses, some have hired, uh the only one has hired a biologist, and that was unique to the to the islands. But many have hired nurses, many have hired uh different types of inspectors. Some have hired building inspectors that do nothing but buildings and go to court. Because as as your health director would tell you, uh if they have a housing inspection issue and goes to court, the, your your staff that you're paying, that your board of health is paying, is sitting in a courthouse watching domestic abuse and watching speeding tickets. And eventually the clerk will say, is there anything else? Oh, yeah, I can get this housing thing uh from the town of such and such. And and now it's three o'clock in the afternoon, they shot. So some of the groups are actually hiring housing inspectors so they can go through all of that aggravation and sit there go defend what they're doing. Some are are dealing with opioid and substance use disorder issues. It's it's just, it's all across the board. But one of the, one of the things that that is is key to this is that while all of us are together, the state is looking at standardizing the reporting mechanisms. And that's, that's the uh, the establishment piece of data systems. Now, um the blueprint also wants workforce development. Toward that end, right now, if if you wanted to get trained in soil, you would uh travel the state. Did you go across all the state? It's 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 a mess. You have to go to the Western Mass for some of it. You go, you can go all over the state. It took, how long did it take you to do your soil training?
Well, it was only like a week. I did it back in ninety-four.
Oh, okay, but today.
Today, it's like six months.
Right, and then you wait on a waiting list for a year to get tested. So under the program, what's what they're doing now is they've set up ten regional training hubs uh all across the state on 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 paper, in theory, you should not have to drive more than an hour to get to any of them. So from here, uh the least, the actually closest to Irving and Bedford. And and so instead of having to go to North Hampton or something, it's all right here. All of the trainings and all of the certifications. The workforce assessment that I've been talking about will, once the numbers are charged, will tell the state that this particular grouping needs the following. And they're not doing it by the towns. There are six towns, I believe, in your group. Is that right? There's, I think there's six in your group. So so then, instead of saying that that the town of Dayton is deficient here, here, and here, which opens you up to some criticism in the community, opens you up to social media attacks, which are too plentiful these days. Uh so instead of any discernible data having to do with your town, that's not there. It deals with the shortcomings and the needs of a particular region. I don't want to use the word region in the sense of regionalization, but a particular grouping of towns. So the data will say that the, that the north, that the North Attleboro group, because that's your host community, is North Attleboro, needs three inspectors, needs uh uh new tablets and and software to do all of the inspection on, needs a nurse, needs whatever it is. Uh and I'm gonna sort of get away from the slides because I think that what I'm talking about is is in so many of the slides I've got, we're just talking to you straight now. So the the identified, and the funding, I'm gonna show you this one slide. The the funding comes from two sources. One is the state budget line item, which this year is fifteen million dollars, even though we asked for thirteen million dollars. Something very strange happened. We actually had the Senate tell us we didn't ask for enough money. Tell them whenever the Senate will tell you, oh, that's good, that's enough. But they came back and they said thirteen is insufficient and gave us fifteen. Uh and then we have two hundred million dollars from ARPA. There was a discussion in your meeting on the third about uh some of the, some of the funding that was, that came in from state and federal sources that went to other things and of public health. In almost three hundred and fifty-one of the three hundred and fifty-one towns, public health didn't get very much of the money that came from the public health crisis. So uh the state legislature recognized that and said, we need to earmark two hundred million dollars uh from the ARPA funding to go directly to public health on the local level. So if the state at the end of the capacity assessment says that the North Attleboro group needs two inspectors and needs a, needs two nurses and needs the following equipment, and that this, and they're gonna be buying iPads and software for every single health inspector in Massachusetts. When they're done with saying, this is what they need, the next line out of their mouth is gonna be, and here's the money to do it. So there's no unfunded mandate. And and public health, as Cheryl just described, you know, you go to your to your uh town meeting and beg for money every year for for your health department. I did it a few years in Framingham where I'm from. The first year I went, I did terrible. I got level funded. I was asked for a fifteen percent raise, and I got level funded. Couldn't figure out what happened. And then I realized that when I was arguing to town meeting, I was talking about a health department that had a director and assistant director, three, four inspectors, two shelter workers and two nurses. And I was asking them for more money. And they couldn't figure out why I would be asking for more money because they didn't know about that circle that Cheryl showed you and that that page of other obligations. And and the health department was doing well. So a good health department functioning on all cylinders is invisible. You don't even know that they're, until there's a problem in town. If there's a restaurant that you have to close down, if somebody dies in the restaurant, uh gets very sick. Uh if there's a building that's condemned because of of uh even even something simple is hoarding, that gets in the news. And so people know there's a board of health, they know what the health department does. But if everything's working right, you're invisible. So what's what's anticipated with this funding is that everyone will be, will be treated the same. Everyone will get all of the resources they need.
Well, subject to the, to appropriations.
Subject to appropriations, that's exactly right. Although the two
But that's how much that exists now.
Right, the two hundred million is is going out, right? And that's actually in slide, yes, okay. This slide shows you how the two hundred million is available. And uh uh take a look, you can see the uh infrastructure is is one goal um under the capacity building. The other is is to uh address health disparities. We saw some incredible health disparities over the last two years. Uh and this this actually affected every portion of our population, from the elderly to students, to every, everybody was affected by the health disparities. So there's seventy-one million dollars, seventy-one point one five million dollars for addressing those issues. The workforce development, which is the regional training hubs and uh making sure that all of the people on your staff have all the certifications that they need. Uh that's part of the questionnaire process is what do you have for certifications? Uh Cheryl and I uh do a certificate program for board of health members across the state. We did one last Saturday. Uh it was virtual, Thursday night, and so we usually do one Saturdays live. Uh and talk elections, the closest one to here that we do. But um uh we, those those trainings have been very loosey-goosey, sort of like if you can go, it's a wonderful thing to do. Uh as a result of the workforce development standards, your board of health members will pretty much be required to attend uh the the education programs given. So that when they sit here in front of the board of selectmen, and they select a specific question about a specific duty or responsibility and and what the frequency of that is, you'll get an answer because they will have that data available through through all of this also. And then that's the third piece is the data systems and performance tracking. And that's really, that's more centered towards tying everybody together. I mentioned to you in the very beginning that uh that on the islands is that this talk of one in five have substance use, there's no data that's showing. This money here is gonna help us to develop what your needs are as far as your Asian population in Dayton is concerned. You have Asian population in Dayton. With your, your numbers and stuff. And and uh what's going on in the schools and your school districts around here with kids coming back from uh from COVID, not knowing how to socialize, and all of those issues that are coming up and that. There's money to to capture the data so that you have some idea of what you're going after. And then there's money to to develop the workforce to both tackle it. And then there's money there to uh to 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 make it so it's sustainable. That's out of the two hundred million now. The fifteen million dollar line item, which is what the grants are run on. And let me pick up on a couple of things on the Public Health Excellence Square. It's actually a nine-year program. Uh and it's actually two hundred thousand dollars per year uh in three two-year cycles. So the current cycle, I think, is two and a half years left when we came into it. But there still are two more cycles down the line on that. And when that was originated, it was thought at the time that if we can't make this happen in nine years, it's just never gonna happen. And then COVID. And it and it sort of catapulted everything that we're talking about right now. It was not back burner, but not back in the back. But it catapulted everything to the front burner. Now, everybody in the public knows what the board of health does, what their, what their function is in protecting the town from from disease and all of that. So the timing, while COVID was a tragedy, there was a silver lining in public health. It brought us out, it was the fourth one. And um uh that's, that's what we're, what we're hoping is that uh the fifteen million dollar line will become a permanent line item uh in the, in the budget for the State Department of Public Health. We won't have to go back to the legislature every year, if you've done it the last two, three years uh with complete success. We we actually had unanimous passage in the Senate and unanimous passage in the House. So they, they are, everybody in the legislature understands the importance of this. Now, it's an idea of making this so that it's always going to be, you'll always have same communities working. There may be something come and go. Come and go is important, just one important point. The agreement that's be, that will be proposed to your group uh as far as an intramunicipal agreement that will come before you as one of selectmen has provision in it that there's a thirty, a ninety-day opt-out. So anywhere in the existence of this, of this grant program, if the town of Dayton says, we're not getting, we're not getting our due here, we don't want to be part of it. It's ninety days to get that, you know, stuck with the program. Although I don't think they'll ever, I don't, I don't see that. So I don't have any today.
That's what you asked for. Thanks.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yes, very much so. I believe we're going to have questions.
I bet.
Ms Pacheco, do you have any questions?
My only question right now is, um how many board of healths that you're familiar with? Do they all get involved with Stonewater?
Pretty much. Yeah, because it's everywhere.
Yeah, no, there's been some discussion that given it to another department in town, so I was wondering if
It's normally a health department function. In collaboration, obviously, you need the other departments to rectify the situation, but it's normally a board of health. It's in the list of
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a percentage um that the state recommends the town budgets be for?
That was what they're working on. That was one of the things that they did not have. There, that's one of the things that the legislation that was asked unanimously, but wasn't signed by the governor, so that that piece. But that's one of the things that DPA is charged with, to look at what should be a funding
Okay.
That municipalities and usually the guidance, not mandated, but that they use as a balance.
The guidance, okay. In the fifteen million, um who 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 and how did they come up with that figure?
They came up with it based upon a proposal that the legislature asked the, what's called a coalition of local public health.
Okay.
It's an entity made up of the state uh public health membership association. So the boards of health So the boards of health, the health officers, the environmental health officers, the public health nurses and the Massachusetts Public Health Association. The Public Health Association is really our the our our chief advocates. That's that's what they do. But we are the content experts. So we put together um what we felt we needed and we came up with and the dollar ask and they added fifty, another couple.
Right.
And give us that.
Okay. And my last question is, what is the benefit to grouping the communities a- as opposed to just taking them individually? Is it to save face or?
No, it's it's, I can give you certain examples. Um, every every municipality is charged with having someone who can inspect pools.
Right.
Uh, there may, I don't know how many pools Dyden has.
Uh, just a couple, what?
A couple. And however, North Attleboro may have twenty or twenty-five, depending on how many other associations they may have that have pools. So Dyden doesn't need a full-time pool inspector to inspect two pools. So the idea would be if you're sharing services, then someone who um you don't need an expert in pool inspections. You just need your pools inspected by someone who is an expert in pool inspections. Why can't that be a shared service?
Okay.
So that you're not spending the budget. Um, in addition, if you're sharing, there are some some instances where you're going to want your local staff to be addressing issues. You're not going to want a shared service inspector. And Mike uses an example, doing restaurant inspections. And you have some really troubling establishments that have been yeah, for a long time. You may want your health inspectors to be concentrating on those more complicated restaurant inspections. And you may want the easy ones to go to someone who can do the for a name in geographic areas. Because you're not going to have the time to, your inspector may not have the time to do all of them. They want to concentrate on what the priority areas are in your municipality. Another um shared service is, one is nursing and one is looking at a community outreach person. This goes back to the boarding issue where you could address the housing code violations and the buyer can address the exit and the egress and the entrance issues that that are going on. But who can get to them for why is this happening? What kind of therapy can you use? Who can contact their family? That may be of someone who who would share amongst municipalities. Those are some examples of how you may want to.
That's one of the shorts by one thing. The the sharing model is not that uh the inspector will be in Attleboro on Monday and North Attleboro on Tuesday and Dyden and Berkeley on Wednesday. That's not how it works. The sharing model is that that your staffs, all of your, all of your workers, the the inspectors, the health agents, the nurses, they're all going to be included in the discussion when uh when we get to the point where we start to decide what this particular group needs for manpower and or or for staffing, actually, with manpower. Uh, and and it may be, it it may be save save a food inspector, might be. You don't have a lot of restaurants, in fact, that is.
No.
Just a handful.
Yeah, so, but it what would happen is that uh your health agents and your inspectors will no longer have to do low-risk food because the shared inspector is going to do all of low-risk food in the area, take that off of everybody's plate. And then once that's accomplished, because it won't take a whole year to do it.
Right.
There'll be other steps sprinkled in by the by the by the various towns. One town will say, we need a little bit more of this, we need a little bit less of that. So that'll that over the course of the first year or so will sort of start to get defined. But it's not going to be that one inspector goes to one town on one given day. However, I heard something about a couching. Is that really?
That is correct.
Is that?
That is, no, no, that doesn't happen to you.
So for a couching, first of all, you're gonna, you might have food trucks, right, contributing to the couching. And so you're going to need more inspectors than what you have because the what happens is the food trucks show up at eight AM. They have to be inspected so they can be open by ten. And if you have twenty food trucks, I don't know how many you have, but it takes a while to reach one.
Right.
And so that would be where your shared inspector. If if Nicole was going to be running a clinic uh for for giving immunizations, it might be that she could say, let's do, let's do Dyden, Berkeley and and uh Tom along together in one big clinic. And she would work with the shared nurse. That your portion of that is is present day.
Okay.
Okay, so it's it's sharing the resource on on a more umbrella. And I've met some towns that are very resistant to this. Because there are towns that don't understand, they're afraid that they're going to give up some of their powers. And for the first thing is that Cheryl and I wouldn't be sitting here if there was any chance that your board was not going to be able to continue to make its own regulations and do its own enforcement. The the inspector will come in to your town, will be using your town's uh health regulations and will come before your board of health and and will 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 present the findings to Todd and then will take it up with the board for enforcement. So it's it's you're you're not losing out on anything when it comes to that. Uh, but what I've been telling the the resistant towns is think of it as a temporary agency. You 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 have a temp agency. And when you've done with that temp function, when you're caught up to that, whatever that is that you hired the temp for, they don't go away. You you're signed into something else. And I have a one hundred percent record on on convincing towns that have been resisting all of those those little gray spots on the map. There there's, two months ago, there were a lot more gray spots. And that's the one line I'm told by every every board of health and every board of selectmen, every mayor, every town manager that I talked to saying, you got an email on the temp agency. Because we can all relate to the fact that we all need some help from time to time. So that's.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, and actually, just one last question. Um, when it comes to data collection and and grading of these establishments uh Manhattan and this, the boroughs have a great system, uh A through F or whatever, I I think it's F. And 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 an A standard in in one borough is the same as an A standard in another. And is that something that will happen with once we get the data collection going and
Yeah, actually.
With this particular group?
We tried, we tried doing that in Framingham.
Yeah.
And and because we have four hundred, four hundred and fifty five restaurants.
Wow.
And what what prevented us from being able to do that was the fact that you might have somebody who's softer on this item than that. So with the workforce development training programs they're going to get, every inspector in Massachusetts will have the same minimum standards that they're all going to be enforcing. And at that point, we could actually go to a statewide, A through D.
Well, that's what I was wondering.
New York City doesn't matter.
Right.
New York City, U C S C today, we'll come back next week, that's that's now her she's.
Yep, right.
Well, that's a boss, too.
Yeah, very true, yes.
So it would be statewide, not the local group-wide?
Well, it could be. You could start it here. You could start it. That's totally, that's again, that's the beauty of why Cheryl and I are sitting here is where no one's telling your board of health that we're not going to do that.
Okay.
But what to to further on what you're saying is what what you could, now that we will have, we all, we have a standard inspection report for restaurants, one exists. The problem is bad that it isn't being filled out the same way in other municipalities and sometimes it's not even being, it's not submitted. What the public health excellence grants in the budget, um the line item that Mike mentioned, what that would, everyone will be given the same system, the same data collection system. It's basically a software program where everything is uniform. Every, there will be space for others where you, wherever you want to write, you will be collecting. Dyden collects the same data that Stonewall does.
Okay.
And that's going to lend itself more easily to having a grading system. A grading system without a a uniform system of correcting the data, it would just do anything you'd like.
Right. Uh, where I worked at one time, we had the same quality control in California that we'd have here in Massachusetts. And uh so they were all, not judged, I hate that word, but the criteria being the same, you you fail or you pass. But the criteria was if the cold food is supposed to be forty degrees, then that's where it was everywhere, regardless of what the local, it was all by individual states, but.
Food code just has that, we we adopted the federal food code.
Federal.
And then we we amended it up. We're still a little behind in Massachusetts, but we have state food code.
Right. Uh, we always would say uh there were local requirements, but whatever this was the more stringent with is what we would would use. I didn't mean to take up so much time.
No, no. Because I have many more questions. Um, first question. What is the timetable for hiring a coordinator for the health excellence grant?
The particular grant, I was hung up a little bit because the town of North North Attleboro, which is the whole community, I had to have a review by the by the town council. And the firm that was representing them is very backed up. And a lot of it, it's, it's backed up. All of the public health people have backed up. I mean, it's probably driven by the main grant. I mean, it's 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 insane what's going on. So we waited for them. We got their, we got their uh approval on the job posting last week. And uh according to the to the regulations in place, North Attleboro, they have to vote in places. And those postings are, I don't know if it's been made or being made.
I don't know, I was looking around with the time.
Okay, and she was she was planning on doing it before this week's meeting, which is. Yes, so so probably as we sit here, they're posted. What I had recommended was to leave the posting up for a couple of weeks and see what happens. Uh, I also have a couple of other recommendations that I'll make to to your group tomorrow at the meeting. One is uh that there are a couple of agencies, one of which is the same same uh consulting firm that's doing the whole capacity assessment, has a little wing of people that they're hiring to do the grants uh the the shared service coordinating work. So your shared services coordinator answered, long answer, is probably within within a month. Uh, and that brings me to to my ask of you, which is that the way that the capacity assessment is rolling, everything's been delayed. Each each of the two deadlines were each delayed one week and two deadlines so far, so they're two weeks behind. The third one is, I think, is going to be, is going to be delayed too. But I think that all of the data of the capacity assessment is going to be in the hands of the the consulting company uh within the next, I would say, thirty to forty-five days, they'll have everything over. Let them, my ask of you is let them do their work, let them come back and suggest what it is that you need from a very objective, highly professional uh thirty thousand foot view and let them tell you, this is what your town needs for for uh to 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 shore up its 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 board of health functions. And then let's see what the grant program is willing to purchase for you. And then whatever grant minus what you need, that's that's what you should be looking at for your own internal. I know you have, you've set a Christmas deadline for for your group. Uh, and what I would ask is, uh, I think that by Christmas, there's there's a chance we're going to know what the results are. But it's not a huge chance, but I would say that by the second week of January, we're really going to know exactly what the means, what the uh capacity assessment is going to, it's going to be revealed. It has to be done because we have to, there, we have so many other groups that want to start hiring and they and the budget's all budgeted so that we can start hiring in January if you want. Uh, so for this for this year's fiscal budget, everybody's planning on making those hires. And I and I think from my reading, probably in public health, with their office of local and regional health, I I think that that office is, well, I know that they're very cognizant of that of that data. So if you if you could flex maybe two to three weeks, I think that you're going to, you won't be, you won't be shooting in the dark, saying this is what we need to do. You'll have somebody helping you to tell you, this is, this is objectively on paper, this is what your, what your whole area needs, this is what we can give. And then then you know what you want to do.
What is the target date for the implementation of the excellence grant? You're going to be hiring a coordinator within a month?
Yeah.
When is it going to stop rolling?
Uh, it's it's going to be as fast as you can hire at that point. And there are some issues in higher, because you have, we have fifty grants. We have, my count, we have around forty-five public health nurses that are going to get hired by those fifty grant groups. We have probably fifty-something inspectors that are going to get hired. When I say inspectors, some will be food, some will be housing, some will be just general health inspectors. Uh, you're going to have a whole bunch of community health workers and and community health educators and things of that sort. Uh, so this is, it's going to be a supply and demand issue at some point, because it's going to be everybody competing for the same.
So this isn't happening before January?
You're not going to, you'll you'll have your shared services going in before January, so you're you'll, you'll be in a position to hire anybody.
It's going to be allowed before those services coming back to the town of Dyden?
I would say, I really feel that so you'll have, you're getting those services by that word. I think that I would draw to the question.
So I can, so I can, when they capacity assessments are really going to help like further inform what type of inspector we really need to hire as well.
Correct.
So like one, so yeah, but there is a sequence in you, uh one part of what's happening now does really know how it actually form the next part of process.
This is, this is the truest example of don't be afraid to admit that you don't know what you don't know. Because we don't know, nobody in this room knows what that capacity assessment is going to show for Dyden or for the intro to the Attleboro room. Uh, and and it may be something that we're not even thinking about in this room. The the state's going to say, this would help you tremendously.
Thank you. Um, regarding the ARPA funding, the two hundred million dollars. What, this grant is for a nine-year program, is that two hundred million one year or just for ninety? For four years?
That will all be spent in four years. So everything that's on there will be determined in what it's gotten paid for.
And that is just for the six schools or for the whole state?
That's for.
I mean, six towns, sorry, six towns?
The whole, everybody.
The whole state.
Grant over, the the shared services will go on. But this is, this is to buy you everything you need to make that.
Now, the ARPA funding is that for this coalition of six or kid individual towns?
It'll be to the group of six. All the data will be collected from the capacity assessment for the six. It'll be for the group of six. If one town has a glaring need, I think at that point, yes.
Well, yeah, the the resources would be spent on fixing whatever the glaring need is.
Right.
And how will that be determining glaring need?
Uh, the state.
Through the capacity assessment.
State through the capacity system.
So it'll be the state, not the members of those six communities?
The state would only wouldn't, they're they're not going to force anyone to do anything that's not DPH's rule, except for uh workforce standards. Those are going to be codified.
So who determines the need, if you're saying it's not the state?
Well.
Would the six community?
Based on the statutory and regulatory obligations. Those are already set. If those are done, there's nothing. What what the state will be doing is comparing what a municipality is able to accomplish with what they have to accomplish pursuant to the law. So that's where they're not going to be creating anything new, they're going to use the statutory and regulatory obligations that are in existence. The laws that already need to be enforced.
Right, but my question is, the allocation to a specific town or a specific need, how is that determined?
It would go through the collaboratives.
It's about six towns.
Wouldn't go, and that was, that was a real concern that we all had. We didn't want this money to just be divided up and sent to cities and towns. Like what's happening with some of the opioids that, that, you know, they divide it and send it. And then who knows where it ends up going. That's why we wanted it to go through a public health entity, which is the these collaborates that is being built.
Okay, thank you. During your presentation, there was some general conclusions made about the Board of Health in Dayton. And I was just curious where that data came from. Has all the data been submitted by the Dayton Board of Health about the needs and concerns?
You referred to Phase One of the submissions?
Yes.
Yeah, that was submitted a couple of weeks ago.
But I think you're asking a different question. I came before this, for this summer to discuss some of these issues, and I don't know if you've been before. But I was here and we talked about a lot of these issues.
Mr. Phelan, could I get a copy of that report that you submitted to the state?
I don't know if I can print that out.
I don't think, it's, it's, it was online, right?
And, and one of the, I had, I had mentioned in my presentation, thing about the Band-Aids. And one of the things that, that, that kept Cheryl and I away is the fact that we're asking boards of health and their staff to be incredibly honest, which could open them up to some criticism in the community and some, some, uh, unwarranted intrusion. And, uh, so what we had asked the state to do was to set up a system so that, uh, so that when Todd entered his stuff in the computer, he was on basically a Google Doc, I think it's actually the survey. And so the other end, at the receiving end of that, is a company called BME Strategies, which is this, this, this consulting company I've talked about. And BME Strategies is not a state agency, they're not a governmental agency. So, and, and it's not in his computer, it's not stored in his computer. And so there's no public record that's accessible by the public, goes to his computer into a central database. They will crunch all of the numbers before anything gets in the hands of DPH. DPH doesn't get to see anything until just before we all get to see. And, and in that way, there's no public records requests that say there are towns, I don't know how it is in Dayton, but there are towns where there are people committed to making the town government look as bad as they can. And it's on social media in which ways to protect those.
But to your, to your point, there's no reason why your health director can't share the information with.
Thank you. Because, a- and that's really important, a- and I'll, and I'll tell you why. One, as you're well aware, we're reorganizing the Board of Health. I- it's more than just the job description of the Board of Health agent. We're reorganizing the Board of Health. Secondly, one of those positions that we are looking at will soon be entering in contract negotiations with a union, which not, not necessarily work on the same timeline as that report. We also have budget concerns that January, we're going to really in earnest get into. And I understand the concerns regarding criticism. But I, I need the Board of Health to look, to state to us emphatically where we'll wait, while we're waiting for this report of what your needs are. So that we can plan a budget accordingly or provide other resources. Now, I've heard something today that I'm a little troubled with, that there is no additional upper monies that Dayton specifically can't apply for. They, who are working within the group. I see tr- tremendous advantages of this partnership. You know, one of the things, just in the sheer savings in administrative costs of our people, paperwork. The fringe that we won't have to pay because someone else will be coming in and helping. Um, but just coordinating it so that the picture that we get when we make decisions about budget is in a, done in a timely fashion, so we're not waiting another year to provide services to the taxpayers. So that's my concern.
Yeah, and, and, and I don't know if this helps or not. One of the requirements of this program, of this grant, is that municipalities cannot use it to supplement, to, to, yeah, to supplement. Well, they can use it to supplement, they can't substitute.
Okay.
Uh, the money that you're currently spending.
That's, that's.
This would be additional costs that, that would come in to the municipality.
I just have two more questions. You spoke about someone, and that was a big help. On the issue, traditionally across the state, does the Board of Health handle transfer stations or they do as well?
Yes, um, and it, and it depends. I, I know in the town that I live in, they collect the transportation, transfer station fees. Uh, they work in collaboration with the Department of Public Works. The arrangement ends up, it depends upon the communication level between the, uh, DPW and the Board of Health or the Health Department. But i- in most cases, it's a shared.
Okay, which we, good. Uh, last question's a simple one. Could we get a copy of your presentation? Oh, thank you very much. Um, I have a potential motion that I'll need input from the board members before I do this. It is not on the agenda for public input. However, I have no problem with it if the other members don't. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to allow public input?
I'll make that motion in a second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Chico?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hovless, aye.
So yeah, like the only recommendation I have extensive is actually like a joint meeting between the selectmen and Board of Health, like it might be including two guys. And let the Board of Health members ask questions, make comments before we open up the public.
Absolutely.
I think I'm fine.
With that being said, um, does the Board of Health have any objections to public input?
You said yes, please, well, go ahead.
Chairman, oh, thank you for asking the question. That's the point I wanted to make, so I appreciate you bringing that up. Um, the question I have is specific to the work. You mentioned, I think, forty-five public health nurses. So how do the groups intend to come up with a workforce when there's such a shortage of people out there? And I think I know your answer, which, which raises a lot of questions.
So, there, well, there is no, the, the answer is that a lot of the groups right now have been in the business for a while, uh, have been exercising school. And have been, there's a bunch of graduate graduates who want to graduate in class. Not just in, uh, not just in the area of urgent, but also, uh, some of the groups actually went to the community colleges or to their, to their local colleges. Uh, and book, you know, there's a team like there. A lot, a lot, I know there's a number of kids from you know, brands from university that is in their, uh, uh, and, and programs that in suit that. So it's a matter of really using your resources. There's going to be, there are these issues.
But it's safe to say that current.
But then some limits, you can't, it's, there are issues that pick them up. Uh, uh, we, we have an issue in one, one collaborative where there's an existing town nurse that wanted to become the shared service nurse. And I think a question that came out of that were, what happens when you're in your? So I, there's, th- those are some obvious issues, but those can be worked on.
Yeah, and that's also, it's, well, uh, you know, this is all about the conflict. So the concern that I have, firstly, within, uh, one of how the Dayton has the staffing that does, which obviously is creating a problem. Is that if we now effectively could move staff members to the collaborative, understanding that we'll be able to open a collaborative, but if Alco leaves a gap in our board, that now is filled.
Yep.
So, or, or department, I should say, right? So that, that's a concern that I have, because I, I do think this is a workforce problem, and I do think you're gonna have hard pressed to fill all these spots without tapping into some of the existing Board of Health employees that we have, see why. So that would be my point, so I think.
Thank you.
So I guess, so, so, uh, like you talked about the timeline with the capacity like in how the capacity assessment really aimed at informing, uh, how, you know, like to the public really. I, in the meantime, we're facing a few, oh, you know, that are really, oh, you know, the so, so yeah, the responses from the general, other general operating structure that we found right now today. Uh, with them tapping, you know, to deliver you oh, you know, your services and programs get to residents as well, and all the uh, that's what really drives, you know, even if there wasn't, uh, the P G three or the groups, that we wouldn't have been here anyways. Um, so I mean, oh, you know, and over the last probably a few months, oh, you know, like in the middle of my queue. Uh, you know, people working like I asked, so, so like a past few meetings as well, I really get sense. So yeah, kind of a few, uh, without a challenge and so forth. Uh, you know, so be, so we've been, so I'm kind of like having discussions about, oh, you know, uh, and based on all the roles and responsibilities that are required. Uh, you know, kind of, I, I have anything we can, so frankly, uh, the only thing we do now that we can really structure these and program accordingly, so we might be able to sell. Oh, you know, while controlling accountability and management. Oh, you know, like a whole host of other things, because right now, we did, so, so yeah, so they're going to start this in fact for residents. Uh, you know, based on, I guess, what you have seen, what you've, uh, heard, uh, just, uh, from, uh, so the meeting, oh, you know, that you came to us in the diary, is there any, so are there any things that you, I guess? So, I have something to say on the street that you, you had them on kind of low hanging fruit and oh, you know, so yeah, ability to help us in the interim while we're waiting. Oh, you know, like all these bigger pieces, but, oh, you know, this, uh, that still helps us really solve the issue of basic development.
Yeah, it does. Um, you know, we've got two issues here. One of the public health excellence grants, that's in addition and I see what you're saying. I don't know the, it's an episode, you're like, uh, you know, I've been here twice, but I don't know. You know, what, what you're comfortable doing and what you, you don't do. I know that there's a lot of paperwork in this, a lot of backlog, I know that. Uh, so I, I don't see why you can't, so the public health excellence isn't gonna, isn't gonna fix all.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, that's what I really, yeah, yes.
Because it's not big enough now, um, to do that. Eventually, I think we'll see a system that's more where we're gonna have more shared services and we are money, um, put in from the state, but we're not there yet. So you do need to look at, as it does every town, and as Mike said, you know, the timing really the timing couldn't be better when it comes to you're gonna get some assistance from the public. But the timing really doesn't matter when you're looking at what restructuring. Board of Health. So I think what you're asking is, do we have any sort of models? Or do we have any ideas on how you could, number one, uh, increase things that could potentially uh, lead to a revolving fund being set up in, um, in Dayton so that the money would go back to the Board of Health? That would be one idea where um, the resources in that will be assist with some of the hiring. Um, and then other ways of raising revenue. You know, it's, it's difficult to think of ways of raising revenue other than, and again, you know, you can't tax. But when you look at, when you figure out what it actually costs to do whatever that, whether it's a food service permit or whatever it is. Uh, you know, you need to include things like the, the electric bill, the copies, the, the, you can include everything that is encompassed in what it costs to actually issue that permit to do the inspections. Uh, another fee that some people have would be a reinspection fee. I don't know if Dayton has that or not, they do, you do. Uh, and then, you know, you, I, I see, I know that you're considering different options, and I think you consider that with or without the public health excellence.
Oh, right, yes.
That, that this exercise you're doing is valuable. You know, we're just looking at the public health excellence grants as a way of assisting on the top of whatever the infrastructure. And I know the infrastructure, you can only afford what you can afford. Uh, but I do think that the line item will eventually, what we're hoping is that line item will eventually really play into the delivery of services that Dayton needs, however they end up getting delivered. But, you know, I know you, you need more, you need more bodies, I think, is one thing that you need. And you also need some sort of, uh, administrative structure that makes sense. So that you don't have, you know, all this paperwork that's not being addressed. And, and some of that may be people, some of that may be software programs. Um, some of it may be looking at other municipalities that are similar in, in size and in budgets, talking to the, to either the health director, the town manager, whatever, to see what else exists out there that is structures. Yeah, what kind of structures, uh, other municipalities that look like you, um, are using and see if any of that, because you know, which is really there are some that might, I, I don't know, that, that might, uh, be working in a way that you might want to use. You have to not terribly helpful, but. Some things.
You know, with to have both of you come here today. Totally unaware of the politics, totally unaware of the, the issues that we're dealing with, because you said the report hasn't been completed yet. And to hear, you know, your observations is really helpful.
Oh, I'm glad.
And it, because we try to be objective. It's not always easy.
No.
To hear people, your stature come up and make recommendations, I take it real seriously.
Thank you, and that, that's our job.
That's a huge problem.
Yeah, it really is. So, I mean, I can welcome you guys to be known, some of your colleagues or, or cities and towns that are similar of similar size that.
Mr. Chico?
Yes, I have one question. I asked the group about what things can be, that's all, a lot of those, talk about. Is anybody in contact with the others currently?
Yeah.
Actually, I'm very good. I mean, on the screen. But I, I will say that the national health boards. Sometime in November, we're setting a date right now, we're going to be doing a, uh, a ninety minute to two hour. Zoom presentation on ethics, and it's gonna have a lot of reference to the health excellence program. Uh, and it's open, not just for the health, it's open to everybody. Very helpful, but especially, it'll be timely for what you're trying to do, since you've been looking at December. Hopefully maybe a little bit of January, but, uh, we, we're gonna be doing this in November, so there might be a lot of.
Yeah, and, and there is a lot of interest across the state of. Looking at some of your part-time employees that may want to, you know, go up to full time. By being involved in the public health excellence grant, and those, that brings up union issues, it brings up. It brings up a lot of issues that we're working through, uh, with the state of ethics. And my headquarters just, it's just closed and allowed if you're. Fine, but that's just my. Yeah.
That was actually, that interested me, that was one of the first things, the way I asked the question for one of the boards. The state ethics commission, my contact there said, well, you just asked the same question. Yeah, I asked the question the same way that most people are. People, wanna rephrase it? Uh, and, and, and the reason for that is that there's so many things that, if you say, is that unethical, the answer could be. Ninety times out of ten could be yes, it's unethical. But the next question should be, is there, is there a workaround for it? And this is pretty cool, there's a workaround, something easy as what Daryl thinks. Your disclosure. Uh, and, and that's, that's how it's gonna be handled with some of the groups. I already know with some of the groups that one of the towns won't both. Pay for that, so it's not gonna work. But if, if you have unanimity among your towns and your group, uh, on, on a particular hire. A lot can be accomplished with just this. So you're like, you know, like, I mean, we're, what, we're ten, eleven months in, uh, within our group, but I mean, one of the things I'm really. Proud of, so like, we're probably, so yeah, like, we're in, so we're in a group, we're two of the very small towns in Berkeley in the whole place. But I mean, we as Dayton, so in the group, we're actually the leader in the group in terms of. So like in terms of really the capacity, uh, and the impact I think we have on the group, where, where, so that we're having the same. So, so we're having the same type of group, uh, same voice as Addabo, isn't with Addabo at this point. And I mean, so like everyone's really on, so like, I mean. So like, you know what, it's like a small town, we're always worried about really kind of overshadowed by the bigger players. So like, feel like we're on like a level playing field. I, I will share on your behalf, I hope you don't get upset about me saying this, but. Early on, Mike stood his ground for Dayton, in one of our initial meetings, saying. That's not gonna apply with that, we wanna do it, everybody gets the same vote, same voice, the same. And, and we put for that, Cheryl and I, when we meet with these groups, we always push unanimity, but Michael was, he was right there. Very, very clear about the fact that Dayton has the same voice as Addabo.
That's excellent, because that's how the community feels as well.
You got a good one.
Thank you. One of the things that, one of the things that you have heard loud and clear. From the Baker administration, and I hope it will continue whoever gets elected governor. Is the need for regional agreements and not just board of health in any areas. So.
I think a lot of us kind of, I think a lot of eyes have been missed over, because I think that, uh. Uh, everybody knows this is happening every time we had thirty fifty of the previous. If I hit this point, that, that are, I traded, I'm sorry, I traded ten of the fifteen, one of the suspending, so everybody's watching us. And, and I think that from what I've seen, that around four and those little gray dots that are still out there. They're still out there because they don't wanna give up their whole rule. And, and there is a workaround, and once, once they're convinced that they're not going to be losing. Their whole rule, that's when those, those dots become blue one after another.
And. Mr. Mullins advocacy speaks highly of, of that very question. Mr. Mullins, thank you for. Hearing the will of the people, fighting. Mrs. Gulak.
I'm sitting here listening to this as an outsider, who's been on the inside. We're gonna select the board of health. One of the seven things we're dividing, what is the anonymous workload at? Uh, how much responsibility it belongs to board of health duties. Back in the day, when we were called to order select from the board of health. We had a number of services that were in effect contracted. We had an engineer review septic plants and locked them up and. By the steel of the board of health, I relied on him. I can read a septic plant to know that it was done right, but when I got it from him, I would read off his notes. And if his final comment was good to go, I signed it. If it had other comments, some type of gentleman we had, it was a different person, used to go out and watch, um. Festivals being done or inspect subtitled by installations, things like that. How it sounded when we split the voice. Plus that we could bring those jobs in-house. So I would think as part of looking at, uh, what we're trying to do. We should also be looking at possibly returning some of those services to the outside. There were certainly engineers around that would look at septic plants, you pay for buying a plant. Gentleman we had was actually an employee of Mass D O T, and I'm not saying get him again, he was, but he was great. The term reorganize the board of health is not what you're doing. The board of health is a three-member board by town meeting vote, appointed by the board of selection. Their duties and responsibilities are spelled out statute thoroughly. What you're trying to do is reorganize the department that is under the board of health. Hey, what I mean by that is, you might have different players who are actually members of the board, but their duties and responsibilities. They're spelled out, it's statutory, right? They're the connected. Agencies that was not included. It is the operation within that department that you are trying to reorganize. That's why I mentioned years ago, we had contracted services. It's, it really needs to be pasted. Separated and looked at, what are the jobs that have to be done in-house? What are the jobs that might come through this visualization you're talking about? Should, should we be looking at, like, do we wanna have an engineer, engineering for the septic plants like before? Obviously, that. Of how bombing up that work was done for years and years, but there wasn't a selectmen. Who was a member of the board of health that could read septic plants and say, yeah, this is great, sign one. Oh, no, no. Had full confidence in the gentleman that would send the notes to me and say, if he told me it was okay to sign, I'd sign. If this note said no, it didn't get signed, it went back to the individual to do the. That was that that work done. The other thing too is, there are certain jobs and duties that fall under board of health that. At times you say, really? Does that really belong there? But when you look at things regionally, you find out, yeah, it does happen that way. It's, 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 I can remember, I, I can remember the first rents of pandemics. I can remember going to a board of health meeting, training session that was put on, uh, by the Department of Public Health. Dr. Di Maria was there, he was the keynote speaker. Uh, Brett and I went to that, it was holiday in time. Uh, we had regional meetings when we thought we were gonna have swine flu and. Uh, all those other ones that have letters and numbers in their titles, uh, and, and it was done on a regional basis. Thank God, none of those came along, but by the same token, when COVID came along. Uh, I would say the groundwork had been laid. And then all of a sudden we're faced with, it's here, this is no more, it might come. And, and, and fortunately, uh, most of us stepped through all of that. So getting back to the board of health, you really need to look at the work that should be done, must be done in-house. The qualifications and strength of the people you have in that department now. Match the necessary duties to the strength and qualifications of the people you have. See what can be done, whether it's on a regional basis or some other way. But the, the, the whole thing is, just like any department, uh, big street department, um. What's it, six to seven employees under a department cap. And all of the board of health work is a lot of structured, is that meaning they have daily schedules? Their department tells them where they're gonna be in time that day, what they're gonna be doing and all that. But by the same token, the necessary stuff that has to be done, it's done to be done that way. And then look at the stuff that we can do regionally, maybe we should look at bombing some of this out. Maybe we can, uh, have a joint, um, position with. Pick a town, alright, but as I said, I'm sitting there listening to this as an outsider. But I can also sit on that side of the table and remember the situations we had. And try and put myself on that side of the table, bring it together, so. I, I'm just suggesting, you're not, you're not truly reorganizing the board of health. It's the department under which it starts that all of those employees, they all of that work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are they ready for the questions?
Um, I just want for, uh, Cheryl, my certification, I'm a professional engineer, that's my background. Let me talk about some of this and.
Thank you.
Just so you know, we're on.
With that being said, I'm going to move on to the next, and I wanna thank both for coming today to help us. Always a big help, thank you.
You wanna reach us?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You have a good night. Next on the agenda is business review, discuss. Maybe act on the proposed restructure plan. Um, or. Take any input from members of board of selectmen. I'd like to ask Mr. Mullins for his input.
So, um, uh, the two options are the options that have been proposed officially. Uh, by the board of health, um, that we had initially, uh, within viewing of. Uh, I'm at the last meeting, uh. Uh, I'm not, so this in terms of the, uh, the structure, uh, what was mentioned, uh, tonight. As well as like a full, I mean, one of the things. I, you know, like at this, so I'm like at this point, uh, you know, like if. Uh, uh, the boards, I guess, have any feedback to what has, um, has been proposed by the board of health. Again, with what we heard earlier, uh, you know, in that direction, uh, that we might. Uh, want to start, uh, actually exploring and going down. Uh, I know one of the recommendations really tonight, um, uh, uh, you know, from A H B was actually like looking. So reaching out and seeing what other towns actually like us in the state do, how they handle these. Uh, how they handle the things that we, uh, all have our time to handle. Um, uh, I do know, uh, from the financial management review, uh, that we went through in June. Uh, one of the things that was really helpful that year, uh, that the department revenue did. Uh, was they really broke down what we call bench mark towns. Uh, not only in the region, but across the state of who we really, who we really get to based on budget, based on income, based on work capital. Uh, like in one of the. I, you know, I know just as an example, the, uh, the town of Shirley, uh, was, uh, I was one of those. Into the Lancaster, uh, you have other examples as well, um, and I mean, I'm just. So yeah, like, I mean, well, we just heard and what a lot, I just, I'm just wondering if you wanna. Oh, you know, like really like move it over, like the one with what we already know is happening. Oh, you know, then I'm happy to reach out to those other, actually those other brands that I, I, I live in the region as well. Uh, to see how really this structure, what, or we can like jump into it. Uh, you know, what we can, I mean, one of the things we can really start with, I mean. So just hearing, I mean, what would be helpful, uh, uh, what would be helpful, uh. Uh, me and helping the guys that quite forward. Oh, I guess. All, all together, really, really to begin giving, uh, uh, reactions and instructions from them to the board. Like add really to. So. So yeah, like I thought for, so like, so like, so like, this way, so I looked at different types of communities, I know. Uh, like, and what really the general thoughts and responses of the boards are right now, so. Uh, I hope I answered your question, but we could really go, uh, thinking like a multitude of various directions at this point that I really wanna. Uh, have, uh, have everyone really provide a consensus on.
Thank you. One of the things that was asked of the board of health for this meeting. Was a presentation on the other jobs and responsibilities. Under chapter one eleven that the, um, health agent. Does, and I was wondering if you had that.
I, I don't. It's not the expanded every duty, it's still a point that we can expand upon.
I don't know, just one eleven duties, that's just everything falls under the specifics of.
In, in looking at this. Bond permits. That. Applies to the facility, not what's in it, correct?
If somebody wants to have animals, they, the, the, the facility has to be inspected.
Right, but you're looking. And it's, aren't you looking at two different things? I mean, one, you're looking at animals, you know, what's good for the, but you're also looking at s- the structure.
Yeah, they want me to throw it out of it for the animals.
Right, but isn't that something that. Is code departmental? I mean, that's not only animal control, but. Building under either the commission's capacity or as an agent of the board of health. Say again.
Yes, currently, the, I do now accompany the inspector, animal inspector on every barn inspection. Right now, if, uh, the animal inspector sees something like a deficiency in the building or something that rises. The, uh, level that I should be involved, then I notify. Otherwise, answering your question, typically if the barn was built under, uh, within the last twelve years, I would issue a permit, inspect it. Uh, accordingly, so there isn't collaborative, but it doesn't happen on every occasion.
Do you do that as a building commissioner or part of the board of health?
No, as a building official.
Thank you. Stable permits, who grants those?
Again, our office issues them, but the animal inspectors goes out and does all the inspections for both barns and state, we just process all the papers.
Who does the state recommend do it, issue the permit?
Oh, oh. So yeah, at this point, I'm, so the, so under chapter one twenty-nine, the animal inspector, the animal. Uh, the animal inspector has the bond, but which actually she would put back. Uh, everything in, uh, in the barn works, the department of that is helped recently. Uh, we in Dayton, we have two local processes, um, in terms of the bond permits and the stable permits. Those are processes that have been created under the board of health. So, uh, uh, so those processes are like. Those processes are local response, those processes are local responsibilities that don't. And they don't actually have like a statutory requirement, uh, that the board of health has actually created those processes.
Now, as we look at restructuring, they don't necessarily have to continue.
You're exactly right, yes. But we would have to vote to stop doing those permits, like we, we could just, we would have to end it, because right now, it is in place and we would have to.
Okay. The question becomes also, um. We'd have to, when, if we were going to have that discussion, we'd have to have that discussion with this, with the animal control officer. Since it would be an additional response, potentially add additional responsibility.
Yes, so one thing, and I actually, uh, you know, in the discussion here in my opinion, I mean, it could go either way. Uh, we, uh, so we as town officials, we could, uh, we could trust what, uh, you know, like that we should trust what's in the barn. Or can be important to be, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm a big cultural resources. Um, uh. Based on the very broad, also however, based on the very broad responsibilities of the board of health. Uh, we need, you know, like in sanitary code and other things. Uh, we might have good reason to want to keep that process under the board of health. So if there is an issue and it's a permit issue, and then we as a town have the ability along with. Along with the animal inspector and you know, our convention, partnership and collaboration. Uh, that doesn't really give us the permit, the ability to find something. Uh, through the water health and permit that we might, uh, otherwise not. Uh, maybe not been able to attribute, so it might apply to school. Oh, you know, if we, like if we think that's valuable, is what I'm saying.
The rabies clinic, is that the animal control officer working with the board of health, or is that's?
Animal inspector.
The animal inspector.
So we do all the setup, all the public outreach and all the arrangement, but she works it, we don't work it. Town clerk has to be there, um, and the animal inspector has to be there.
Does the board of health provide any materials for them?
Uh, not much materials, they don't have much materials, we do all the flyers and all the. They, you know, we need to build things and that kind of stuff.
And then the inspections are done by the animal control.
Inspection, it's just two hours, I put the transfer station there with for the animal, um, but one hour. And people come in with their animals and they get their shots by a veterinarian that comes in for the day.
Dr. Bruce's office works with us.
Okay. Now, who arranges Dr. Bru- Bru- you?
The office.
Okay.
So we coordinate the town clerk, Dr. Brucey and the animal inspector to make sure that they're all available. That's due in time for everyone involved.
What the fees are.
Before I move on to animal, well, uh, move on to emergency prep, does. Mr. Patrico and Mr. Karen have any questions about those specific areas that are in gray?
No. So I do have a question, so like the bond permits and the stable permits, if that was taken away from you, then the animal inspector would. Be issuing those, or who will be issuing?
If the regulations run the board of health, I guess we would have to somehow change it to say that the animal inspector would be the one issuing them. And then all the paperwork and would be moved over there, or we would just get rid of the regs and then. Somebody else would have to propagate regs to say that it was being done by them. I would assume you'd want to keep the permits, it would just be a matter of who's doing the paperwork.
I know that the agricultural commission that uh, Barbara's uh, gave her is uh, they're coming up with some regulations for livestock. Uh.
Okay, didn't know that.
That will go to the board of health for approval. If we take this out, will that change, then it won't go to the board of health, still go to the board of health?
Yeah, yeah.
That's all I have.
Good thing, Mr. Agia.
I just think that if we can make these decisions, we need to make sure statutorily that there isn't language already at state level. That requires things to do a sm- a certain way. So I hear a lot of what a health exists, what a health staff, statutorily, what a health might have some old cycle, the animal inspector. I know there's been a lot of talk about separating them, but you better make sure that that's probably less allowed to happen before you make those decisions.
Point well taken.
Help along with, like I said. We just had a presentation, listen to the money that's coming in to help up staff. If we put the responsibility to go it over the bottom. What's gonna help that department carry the burden? We are, we're gonna have an extra people to carry the burden. And I'd say we're gonna, we're gonna post, instead of spreading responsibilities to different departments, that I'm gonna be able to help.
No, no, I, I, I hear what you're saying and what we heard this evening in regards to the report. Coming out in January, I, I, I think it would be wise for the board. To just gather information before we make any decision or any final vote. So.
Make any decisions, switch things over.
It's.
Reorganize, see what help we can get, what kind of branch we can get.
Right. Um, unless there are any other questions about animal welfare, take a look at emergency prep. What is AHAN, HAN?
Uh, that's the Health and Homeland Alert Network.
So you manage that, correct?
Both do, they are both, yes.
Well, this is also helps.
Yes, actually, and that would be the web E O C and um, the public meetings, digital meetings.
You attend those.
I'm sorry, what is it, it stand for?
Health and Homeland Alert Network. So when there is a positive mosquito in Berkeley for triple A or West Nile, we would get a call. They give us a weekly call to update whether it's a moderate or severe or a minor, like the stats of our. Area, town, so to speak.
Now, that role isn't shared with the, the, the fire chief, that's exclusively the domain of the board of health?
I don't know if they get those alerts.
Okay. Okay. What is the orange binders, or what are the orange binders?
Well, this was done a few years ago, every town has to have, it's like twenty-two binders. For basically any emergency situation, you're supposed to just grab the binder and it's supposed to tell you everything to do for that emergency, like. There's one for, say, a natural disaster like hurricane or flood, there's another one for behavioral stuff that's, I don't know, that. I don't even know what they are, but um, that's what they are, they're, they're meant to be your handbook for some type of emergency.
So you edit them? Make sure everyone has one and they're up to date?
No, there's, the office has the set of binders, so the town had the set of binders, but I was in the board of health.
Okay.
And yes, we're supposed to be updating, so it'd be adding tools, um, that kind of thing. Uh, we've had an intern do it for us the last couple few years, we've had them working on it.
But you don't have an intern right now.
But we don't, yeah, but yeah, it's seven queens, it's on us to maintain them. They're vocally lacking.
Inventory, inventory of what?
That would be all of our, um, we have an emergency response trailer that most of the items are announced. So we've got cots, blankets, pillows, um, megaphones, the walkie-talkies, so we can, yeah, and then.
Yeah, elementary school?
It was.
It was, would it get moved to?
It's at the transfer station.
Transfer station.
And we just purchased a iconic box, which their um highway department is gonna outfit so that we can get everything into one place. Which would be great, because we have some stuff stored here, some stuff downstairs, there's some stuff still at the middle school, we have the trailer. It would be great to have it all consolidated in one, we would still use the trailer so that when we needed to. Get the equipment from the iconic box to wherever we needed to be, whether it be the shelter or, you know, if we were setting up the E D S. We still have the trailer so that we can move the equipment, but everything would be in one.
The stuff all over the place, was that done because of lack of storage? Or was it done strategically in case one place got wiped out in storm, you could go to, you know, you had another.
No, lack, lack of storage space.
Um, whose budget does the supplies come out of?
Emergency prep.
They have their own budget, which is the fire chief.
Well, it's now, I guess, that's worse, but, you know, we.
If we go that route, right.
It's a rather small budget, eight five hundred, ninety-five hundred, it, it's a small.
But like twenty-five hundred or whatever you go to take the program.
But. Right now, you're still responsible for the items in it, in its storage location. Are you also responsible to make sure it gets out, or is that fire department?
We are supposed to meet with Mr. Mullin and the fire chief and decide. With these other responsibilities, how we're going to handle that, that hasn't been decided yet. At the break now, yes, it is still on us, since we haven't met to. Discuss it with the chief brother, how he wants to handle that.
Call down drills.
And we haven't done one of those in a couple of years. That would be everyone that's on the incident command chart, which is the gentleman who would be part of, um, Mr. Mullin would be. Uh, most of the officials in town are, and what it is, is it's. We would implement the call, it would basically, it would come out to everyone and it would just say. In the event of an emergency, could you respond to the middle school within two hours? And you either hit one for yes, you could be there within two hours or no. And then, then that's all, all those numbers are documented by the state and then they send us a report. So we know that the town could respond in the event of emergency, who couldn't? Just how good we're all working together, and we haven't done it in a couple of years, one because of COVID. And um, two, we just haven't had the time, every time we think about doing it, we have some sort of a. Emergency that it, it takes a back burner, it's posted on our desk and we need to do a call down drill, but we also need to sit down with. Well, Ken, you've been part of them before, you gentlemen explain actually what it is, we haven't even, we talked to Mike a little bit about it and that we needed to move forward. And then the discussion was, well, okay, emergency prep, what are we gonna do with it, we need to take this step back a minute. We're not gonna do trainings and talk to the new employees, because like our, our new town treasurer, our new town county assessors. They could all need to be involved at some point, depending on the emergency. So we were getting ready to sit down with them to explain what their potential roles or possible roles would be. And Mr. Mullin and um, the fire teacher said, let's figure out what we're doing with emergency preparedness and then we'll move forward with that.
So, but that's the call down drill, or it's just a phone call and you have, but once a year, it's supposed to be doing with the drill with the assembly.
Once a year?
A little further up.
Well, the call down drill is supposed to be.
Quarter, yeah.
The drill with assembly is actually setting up at the middle school, like literally setting up like this was an emergency.
Emergency.
Highway department, like, oh, thank you. And everyone comes and we do a brief little presentation on what would have happened or what we would need to do.
Go over their roles with everybody.
And the state comes down, we um, that our emergency preparedness coordinator would come and be there and take notes and tell us. Kind of critique and help us.
Now, the actual drill is run by a fire chief?
No, it would be us.
That's an E D S, that's why the stuff in white at the top we'd be keeping, that's the E D S site, and that's the E D S drill that we keep running.
So it's the emergency dispensing site, that's what that, so even with.
So even though we ended that group, your, your responsibilities didn't end.
Right, yeah, the stuff at the top there that stayed in white stays with the board of health, and the stuff in gray is what we've done with the fire department potentially.
Hand it over to the fire department?
Well, we're not sure, that's why we need to sit down with the chief.
Okay.
Make sure that it, someone is taking care of it, because right now, things aren't fine, they're lacking.
Okay. Mr. Patrico, Mr. Karen, any questions?
Well, I think when we really talk about this, the fire chief needs to be part of this conversation, as you mentioned.
Mm-hmm. Um, now, do we want to do that before the board? Or is that something you want? Board of health and fire chief to work with Mr. Mullin or?
I guess I would like to hear their, uh, his uh, input on this, I'm not sure how so we need to hear that.
Right.
Think I would want the fire chief. Just as, you know, when we talked about the transfer station, where it sounds like we shouldn't be giving, getting rid of the transfer station from them. Uh, I want, if we want to give it to the Department of Public Works, I would want Tom to be here, that kind of stuff, so, and same thing with animal welfare.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, no, thank you. Um. Are there any questions regarding food services?
I do have a question, and then, the marijuana edibles, what's the inspection as far as that goes?
Well, it's food, so it would be like a, a retail store or whatever, but it's, it's different, you have to check percentages of marijuana and stuff. But if they're making them, like brownies and that kind of thing, it's not medicinal, medicinal, it's different. But we would have to be.
That's just recreational, yes.
Right, we, we have to infect the kitchen if they don't make them.
Any questions, any further questions on food service?
Uh, Mr. Patrico, the other Mr. Patrico.
Oh, yes, hi.
Uh, the animal sector, is that already been divided off?
Not officially.
I would say this.
The, we haven't voted on it.
So.
The police chief has assumed the responsibilities.
So the, so it, yeah, no, there was a very broad job restriction that was approved, but like it left a lot of them. So like for the flexibility we're talking about right now.
So currently, the board of health is on, does control the animal sector?
So, um, that is one, so that is one dimension we moved away from, but it's. Uh, technically, the, uh, the ex-possible entity that an animal inspector is actually responsible and accountable to. Uh, it's, it's the department of that is responsible resources. So like we've made it clear, uh, in the updated, in uh, uh, any, uh, uh, in the updated. Distribution of duties, uh, that the animal inspector really, uh, nominated by the town. Uh, but of course, one point about they, uh, they report us to this thing. Uh, yeah, yes, I was right, that's the thing highlighted here, the consideration to move. You know, most factors, yeah, says in consideration. Yeah, but the complaint in injury, there is um, there is um, negatives between the animal sector duties and also the. Uh, as a water health duty as well, and one of the, was I, it's all there, there, and all. It, it's not, it's not a crisp, but I, if you were more of an office. Uh, then anyone that's, I mean, the, I got one thing that was actually clarified and that would be under the, under M C O actions. But a lot of calls coming to our office, yeah, so there's a. There's a reidentifying a part of the process that we now do with the community as well, like, so like they're going on us.
Say again.
I know it's getting late and I know everyone wants to go on short, but I think this is extremely important and uh. A justification purposes, I would like to know actually about that case. Because it's obvious that we have a problem with service and people's community, I'm very, very vocal about what the people's need. So I like to know what the current responsibility of worker is, so we're on the food services right now. How many food service inspections, permits we issue per year? Um.
I, I think advantage to the board of health. If you could ask those questions and they'll get back to us, because I don't think they have all that. No, I didn't say it wasn't relevant, I said they don't have the data to answer it.
You can go grab the annual reports downstairs, it's all.
What is, what is, what are we trying to figure out here? Trying to figure out whether we need to reorganize, add staff, split duties, but we really don't know what the responsibility is, or what the workload is. I think it's all about.
Uh, it is relevant, if, in regards to gathering the data, if, if it's readily available, if.
It's in the annual reporting, you can just go down upstairs and get it.
Okay.
Uh, I'm not, I'm sure we're not going to finish this.
No, no, that was, that was my point, what it, whatever, what I'm trying to do, based on your early comment about um, timeliness, because quite a bit of stuff on that. Pertinent questions such as that be gathered and then we will decide at the end of this meeting, what will be on the agenda for the next meeting. We're not taking any actions, we're gathering information, a- and one of my goals this evening in gathering that information, you'll see very shortly, is allocation of time. A- and, and with that being said, you know, I didn't want to get into a discussion about stormwater tonight because of the intricacies. What I was hoping, the question I was going to ask, do we make the discussion of stormwater a meeting unto itself? Or do we make it, put it on as an agenda, agenda item and dedicate an hour or a half hour? It's good.
Regarding the annual report, I would like a copy of this, maybe before the next meeting, maybe if we get a copy, I don't know how many. The annual report you were talking about.
Almost, I think they've still got hundreds of them talking about this.
Do they?
Okay.
Yeah.
If you could, yes, if you could provide. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. What's your residential kitchens? Sorry, the residential kitchens?
Yes, so if you want to uh, start selling, okay, so you can pick them in your house, the thousands, I'd be inspected by the kitchen, okay.
Thank you.
Um. Regarding stormwater, does anyone have any questions? Uh. Do we, when we plan, based on what we heard this evening from Mike and Cheryl, do we want to have this as a separate item, or would you want to make it? You know, how quickly do you want to, next meeting or?
I don't think there's any rush, but I do think it has to be a separate item.
Separate? Okay.
Still, Mr. Karen's position, uh, same thing.
Yes.
Um, statewide, countrywide, all water is water. Stormwater, drinking water, and wastewater. The situation we have in this town that the town does not control all of those things. And under the board of health, I see nothing with the drinking water per se. We have two water districts in this community that this board of health is responsible for. If nothing else, those districts should be reporting to the board of health on a regular basis, because they are, as we hear tonight, they're responsible for drinking water. Fortunately, our uh, public wastewater system, we have in-house, the sewer department is commissioners. So that commission should also be, has some connection to the board of health. Right, stormwater was a third, but we've already got this there. But when I was listening to the comments tonight and what I've experienced, uh, out there like in the main rooms, you know, everyone's got solutions, stormwater, drinking water, like, I debate it, it doesn't work in that.
Right, no, it doesn't, at this time.
That's about structure of the town and district. These are something that have to be considered. I'm not trying to add more work to the board of health, but there is a recording requirement there.
Okay.
Uh, just, just to mention that in the list.
Um. Should we include store under our discussion with stormwater, ask one of their representatives to come?
No, it should be separate. Again, whether it's statewide D P or federal cross-country P A, we have all water is water.
Right.
It's a, we have stormwater, which we've got covered. We have wastewater, which the limited amount of public wastewater we have, we have a sewer commission. And then drinking water, we got two water districts. What I'm saying is that wastewater, because they have a board of commissioners, their responsibility would be reporting to the board of health periodically, just to let them know what's going on. If a pipe bursts on the later time, it's a public health issue, we're going to need to. By the same token, if something happens to one of our water districts, like the oil water, it's a public health issue. I know the water district is, we can't go in, but that's a public health issue. So in looking at this, we have stormwater, listen, what I'm saying is, probably there should be a part of our sewer commission wastewater, and then drinking water, water districts, only that they report to them.
Right. Do you have a list of responsibilities for those other areas?
Yeah, she's right, stuff like drinking water, and I kind of think that does fall under the periphery of the board of health, but again, the lack of information, we haven't, I haven't pursued, stuff like that.
Is that mandated by the state?
Yeah.
So as an enforcement officer, could you?
Yeah, because the P F A isn't too high, I can go down there and, I should be.
And you have jurisdiction over them?
Not, I don't know if jurisdiction is right words, but. I, I can go down and have a talk with them.
Can you shut a well down or?
I don't know. I, I, I don't know if that, that's beyond my area of expertise.
Yeah, but that to the, oh yeah, to the area of the capacity assessment, uh, in, I can, capacity assessment number one. These are all questions on the capacity assessment, so there, so these, all those areas, the areas that uh, the capacity assessment is picking up on as well.
Because I think a lot of those questions, like you can answer a yes for doing it, no, we're not, because we don't have enough staff, no, we're not, because I didn't know about the regulation, you had different nos that you could answer at different and some of these was I, I didn't even know I was supposed to be doing it.
Okay. Would we want to discuss those separately or as part of the stormwater?
I think it's a separate issue.
Separate?
I missed that conversation.
Oh. Mrs. Gulat brought up under stormwater, that there were other responsibilities that the board of health has in regards to water, whether it be drinkable water or disposable water, a- and there are some legal responsibilities and enforcement that Mr. Pillling has, even though the board, the water department, both towns, hasn't over the years, weighed closely with the board of health.
It is in this study here, on this report here, that that's one of the responsibilities that they have is.
It's like, I know in the water district, they'll issue advisories in regards to levels. Does that come through you?
Yes, some of them come from the state also.
Right, but I'm saying, what they send out to the public, is it reviewed by you first before it goes out?
Well, not before it puts out, no, I get it at the same time everybody else.
Mr. Pacheco.
Starting with the water, obviously wastewater, we try to, I, it's, sometimes when you tie it in, wastewater goes to town. But what comes into the drinking water, there are reports that have to be sent to the state. And also, it's all the water, it's a separate district, only people of that district is done there, and then the other district, and then we have here is a town that are not going to do this at all.
Right.
So you could send reports to the local board of health, but they're mandated to send, we require this, test them with the state institutions. They go around town, they test water, they use schools, count all side, all public posts. It also works with Somerset, so I think it's out of scope of the local board of health, uh, know the regulations on the district itself, when there are, you know, states.
And that's, so I'm not trying to create another workload for board of health, but there is definitely a responsibility for all water, and since we've been talking about a lot of things, like other public health, we have wells, so obviously title water systems, we get a lot of those in town. But the fact that we have a public sewer system in town, even though everything is not and we have two public water supplies, we don't count Somerset, but we have public water and it does fall under the board of health. Only if a disaster happens, the pipeline rushes and we got a stop coming up out of the ground, right, and so that's a public health issue, yes, the sewer commission should be involved, we can, and the city of town should be notified, whatever. Uh, our pumping station goes down and we got backups. So, but the fact of the matter is, anything happens to the system that creates a public health emergency, which needs a public, a board of public health is going to be involved, even if they aren't hands-on.
Determined that, right?
I'm sorry?
Yes, I think we've already determined that.
Yes, my, my only question is, these are all state regs, they are not bylaws or policy of the town, is that correct? So we could get the chapter to see what the specific responsibilities of the board of health are, correct? Okay. Um, the only other question that I have as I look at this chart is the transfer station in solid waste, I mean, uh, unless we have questions, I, I think we're all pretty much aware of what septic responsibilities are housing and the public health ones are issued. I mean, uh, listen, um, we've had some discussion in the past about who should take care of the transfer station. Um, do we want to have that be a separate meeting?
Well, there is a board right now, committee going over septic roles, not septic, I'm sorry, transfer station and solid waste, I, I although I think we should hear from them, I think it's, they're still early in their meetings to determine what exactly they're gonna, going to do, what their responsibility is going to be.
So would you want solid waste be a part of the transfer discussions or a separate?
Oh, I think it can be part of this, the same.
Same? Okay. All right, thank you. Um. Are there any other questions about this chart? No?
Not at this time.
Just, yes.
Just, just for future meetings, will we can verify appropriately, does the annual report also capture questions that may come up with septic, like perfection permitting, et cetera, et cetera, is that all going fine in the report?
Okay.
I think the photo, though, um, I don't want to scream your phone.
No.
I love that, it's a, it's a, the photo is clearly thought of, but um, although we often grasp how it was arranged, the way this is written, the, the public health there, the animal inspector with all the oversight and all of those items listed down below, and that's not the case. So um, I just want to bear that in mind, if this is something you're actually going to vote on someday, it's not right.
No, 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 no. Regarding these, these are suggested, we're not we're not voting on the option, um, we may change the options. We may, based on bodies taking over certain responsibilities, the float is may.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're not correctly, if I'm wrong, we're not bound by this exactly.
No, we were just trying to give you
Right.
a, a visual.
Yes. Yeah, it, we've, I've, I mean, one of the things that happened tonight, we, we had set the goal of December. And we're probably going to need to have that discussion. At the time, it seemed like a realistic goal, especially when we've been discussing this since two thousand nineteen. But hearing the state tonight say that their final report won't be back to us to the middle of January, we need to have a discussion about the timetable. And when I say a discussion, it's both sides, not just, you know, how the board of health feels about what was said tonight. Um, Mrs. Gulat?
Uh, what is the report that you're referring to? Because I'm not familiar with it, I would, I've wanted departments.
The Department of Health.
Uh, yeah, they're doing a.
Capacity assessment for the town of Dayton.
Is, is there an initial preliminary that what, can you refer to?
Oh, no, they're actually sourcing data from the town now.
Yes.
So, so they can, so they can come back and identify any gaps based on data that exists.
This is.
Is that round two that they were talking about?
Yes.
Yes.
But I have a question there, I would have witnessed.
I have all I can say, yeah.
They are, they are collecting data, they do not wish to share it until the report is completed and publicly released.
So if I could look to that, please.
It was by extension only?
Yes.
It went from B D H to certain public officials.
Correct.
I don't want anyone commenting on stormwater, if I don't have a say in it.
Uh, stormwater is not part of the assessment.
But it's come up in discussion.
Yeah, but we're talking about the department of public health is doing the assessment for all three hundred and fifty-one communities in the state, and out of a hundred and eighty questions we answered, stormwater was not.
Even though it's as we heard tonight.
Uh, done, just, yes, that's what I'm telling you.
Okay, thank you.
You took it.
Are there any further questions? I on the issue of review, discuss, and act health agent job description? Mr. Mullin?
Yeah, my feeling is that this is all still a work in progress and that one thing doesn't inform the other.
Yes. Um. With that being said, you've heard a lot from the board of selectmen. We heard this evening a recommendation of the state in regards to making any final decisions, putting those off until January, based on the fact that, you know, we had established a timeline of December. I'm very curious as to how the board of health feels about that.
Well, Cheryl did say, keep going the way we're going, keep working on it, and whatever comes afterwards is crossing our cake. So we still have to keep working on this, we still have.
Oh, no, no, I plan on keep working, but just, well, no, 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 that's not true. I, I haven't made a decision on that. What I'm trying to find out is you just said that keep going. Oh, keep going can be putting together a plan and then voting on it, or voting on it in stages?
I think, I don't think we can vote on stages.
Okay.
I think we have to, it's a puzzle putting it together.
Right.
When we finally get to where we all agree, we can compensate, change things around, then have the puzzle together. Stages, we might vote and then have to back up, something comes along. Stages, we might vote and then have to back up, something comes along.
All right.
Um. I I I don't know how does everybody else feel?
I I wouldn't be in favor of voting for anything until we have all the information that we could possibly get.
Okay.
Um, but I think we should discuss certainly, uh.
Oh, definitely discuss.
Without stopping and not waiting for the state.
Oh, yeah.
Because they're just suggesting that two weeks delay.
Yes, wait, the state, there are certain things that we need, we need now. And if the state comes, but we may have more things they're going to be giving us too. I mean, it's, it sounds like state has big ideas for board of helps in the future.
So the other thing too, just to me, I agree with that, you know, I can give you as well, like, I mean, so like, we have so in the meantime, we have to think, where do we need to work out and dive into?
Right.
So, I mean, one of the things, so just like a quick, look at the calendars. So, so weeks from now, so, uh, we're given the Monday schedule. Um, not weeks now, it's Halloween. Uh, the night after that is meeting. Uh, the Monday, that is actually the economic development forum, bearing, um, so yeah, getting that here. So, so we set the Mondays. Also hypothetically, that takes us Monday, November fourteenth.
It's a long way.
And so, but we can dive into these other yearly links. So, uh, so, uh, we know we need to have animal, uh, the animal inspection by cheap bed. Uh, we know we're gonna have one dedicated meeting to stormwater. Uh, we, uh, we also, uh, based on the work of like the solid waste study committee, we need to give that committee like a little bit of time to come back with, um, a recommendation and a version board. So I, if you think statistically, uh, the kind thing we're talking about, while not, so while continuing to evolve forward. So like, it's all, it's actually gonna sink in well, I mean, I really think we should talk, keep at it. And as we meet on those items, all these pieces, like, we're gonna be able to decide how we want to go forward with them. And get a better idea of the same intensity go forward. That's just my thought.
Yeah, I was just saying that if we hear from Stormwater, and I'll say Stormwater, uh, we should decide. Yes.
I agree, yes.
Right.
Could we meet another night beside Monday, since we're talking about November fourteenth? It's quite a ways away. You know, we have off Wednesday nights. It might be starting at six, that would be the only thing. But, or five thirty. What what is the earliest?
I think I'm the only one on the board, let's retire it, so.
Is the camera?
Six works better for me.
Six.
But I can do just about any night, if we do six.
I I I really want it, because there's a lot to do.
There is a lot.
And not only is there a lot to do in regards to the job description, we also have to negotiate a contract. A- and that really can't start until we get all these pieces together. So I am hoping, you know, and then we'll probably need a meeting to digest the capacity assessment. Which isn't coming out until January. So that's why if we could pick another day, you know, preferably the last Wednesday in, well, it'd be the
First, uh, Wednesday in October, November, the second.
Right. How's November second?
It's the day after our, I'm fine, special time.
That's the sk- the town meeting?
It's the day after.
Day after.
That's all right.
That'd be funny. I'm sorry?
We had a select meeting in November.
The second, uh, Wednesday is now.
Yeah, we meet the second Wednesday, right.
As of the third?
Actually, it's the night, but we changed our schedule, it was twenty-third, just before Thanksgiving, we're not meeting something, another day we're meeting.
Right.
I think it was just one.
Yeah, right now it's just one.
Are you meeting the twenty-sixth? It's next.
Yes, yeah, we are. So
I like the second or third.
The second or third, what works best?
The third doesn't work for us. We have a mission disability.
Oh, okay, so the second?
So that's the answer right now.
Works for me too.
We're talking six P M.
Hmm.
Well, that one, if I mean.
What's that?
That's what it's gonna be, the second.
Well, I don't know yet, we
Oh, they're still deciding.
I mean, I think we're in agreement, like, the board of health is checking. So the second, okay. Um. Thing that I have going, go into the minutes. As I look at Board of Health. Restructuring. Really, yeah. I see the word administrative agent. And that position obviously will play a role in the restructuring of this. Um. How this is going to be coordinated um in the creation of this position in light of the fact that it is also a union position.
If we, one of the selectmen, um, Matt Tanis when we were discussing my job or the office manager position, that it was um, more of an administrative agent position, where I did assist the agent and did conduct some inspections and just had, um, more trainings and certifications than office manager. He said it's more of an administrative agent, and that's why that's there. That it could be a whole different position, it could be a different title, it could be whatever the board wanted to do. That was just what was previously put out.
I have not seen a formal proposal from the Board of Position. I have a word, administrative agent. But I haven't had a piece of paper that explains.
Trying really to define what it is.
Yeah.
And that comes from what is needed in the reconstruction.
We don't know what's needed yet.
Right.
Well, that request was also submitted in two thousand and nineteen to the Board of Selectmen and again in twenty.
So you have a copy of it?
Well, it wasn't a full-blown written proposal of what the job would entail, was that, hey, we need to evaluate this position.
It was, uh, what else?
It was a request to evaluate it, and that was as far as I'm.
But we could technically take half the responsibility away and you would still need an, an agent?
You mean by half the responsibility?
Taking animal welfare, emergency prep, food services, stormwater away from the board of health. I'm not saying we could do that.
Has anything to do with animal welfare.
Yeah, no, you, I'm not, I'm just using that as an example. Uh, so I I don't want to go, don't want to can't come out, but, I mean, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying that if we took away majority of the, or some of the responsibility, you would still need an assistant agent?
So the theory was that the workload, that it was administrative agent to do some of mine. And that would free me up to do some of the other.
If we took work away, it would free you up to do what you're saying should be an agent?
It could be, yeah, that's, so at that, some of them in the beginning was either give us more staff or take some work away, so we
Right, right.
And again, keeping in mind, we haven't made any decisions, but
Not at all.
You know, we have everything in front of us before we make a decision. Because obviously there is given tech, you know, some of this could be fifty-three Ged out, as happened in the past. I think the odds of the town of Dyne providing more staff with the current economic conditions is doubtful, but we have a lot of responsibility, a lot of work that has to be done, and we're pretty much in agreement.
And also backlog work.
Right. Somebody's got to do it.
It's a double-edged sword. It's not just from here on, we're looking, looking for someone to help us.
It's
everything that has to be done.
Right.
Backlog that has to be
Well, temp service could do that for us.
I'm sorry?
Temp service could do that for us, if it's just logging data.
Well.
A trained.
Yeah.
They're working on that.
The other thing that regarding the administrative agent or clerk, the current position, office manager. What are the rules, the HIPAA rules? Because, well, we have the designation confidential secretary. I work in the healthcare field, and I know some of the information that comes across the office manager's desk is governed by HIPAA rules, and she can't share that information with the public. It has to be very careful about its, how it's maintained and his eyes can see it. Where does that fit into the, the, the role of that person, you know, you know? Confidential secretaries have a different role. They also have a different fee structure because of that responsibility. Where does that fit in?
So the not confidential information our office managers in would not change. That person became an administrator, it's the same information coming into the office, so it's still the same amount of confidentiality that would be required.
Basically, everyone that works in the health department has to be confidential about a lot of things.
Yes. But my understanding, there are three individuals who have that and their, their pays are negotiated separately. Is Mello, correct? So, I mean, it's a little different with the elected two positions, um, because those are stipends from the other three positions. I mean, in Miss Mello's case, she has a license that's on the line if she violates HIPAA. Uh, I don't know if the sanctions are the same as the pill. But, um, so, you know, with that comes responsibility and money. So, um. How does the other members of the board feel about health presenting what they feel is their needs in that area?
A formal proposal from the board regarding?
Well, I understand you submitted one once before, right?
Yes, but it wasn't a, it was a, um.
It was a request to evaluate the role.
Yeah.
It, it wasn't a, this is what we would want a person to do, it was a matter, it was a request to be about it.
So that was just the present, not future needs?
Yeah, it was the present at that time.
I certainly like to see something like that, but also future needs too.
Mr. Hall, do you want a job description?
No. I wasn't proposing, it, it, yeah. I, I think this board completed one once before. They submitted it to the Board of Selectmen, correct? So you have an idea of what that entailed.
Well, it's a preparatory.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, you, you came up with the idea of an administrative agent, that I believe was the board of health's term. So they must have a vision of what they would like to see that role be. That's what I'd like to see. What is your vision? It's not saying it's going to happen, because there are a lot of steps. Board of Selectmen has input. Obviously, there's negotiations that are going to take place. But I, I, I would like to see what that vision is. That's what I meant by that.
I, I feel a little uncomfortable talking about this, we're talking about a union position. Probably something that should be, I agree with you, we should get that formal request, but it's something I think we ought to discuss in executive session, quite frankly. And I think it's, it's a little premature, Mr. Cusack and Karen had said. Let's find out what the duties are and what we're gonna, if we're gonna take anything away and that kind of stuff, and then, I mean, we can get that as soon as possible, that's fine, but I don't think we ought to do this necessarily in an open meeting.
I, I agree. I also agree. Yeah. No, thank you. Thank you. Honestly, yes, it's good.
And you serve on the job description, you've got to advertise that in, and many others who would be qualified to do it. That's what happens when you create the need, so.
No, no, I, thank you, thank you. You know, one of the good things about the possibility of this and where it is involved in the union, I'm sure the union will remind us what our responsibilities are. Um.
I think another person had a question.
Yes, Mr. Galucci.
Firstly, I was in that field for a long time. You have to carry this on, at least, for any current budget, I think five or two hundred and fifty thousand dollar.
Yeah.
Secondly, anybody who has been can then train others, but it can also be co-qualified in some kind of an N B A, some kind of a you know, HIPAA record of the employee science when first take, uh, when first take a job. Being said, you know, create a position eat more of public money. So, it might like that.
That, that part comes out of negotiations, but you may have mentioned a point. When certain employees, and I guess, and only, they only apply to the Board of Health. Do they have, just, do they sign a HIPAA agreement? With the town?
Um, uh, not that I'm aware, uh, public safety employees, they are licensed. And, um, especially, uh, especially power mix, they have their own licensing process and credentials, which they, which they need to do it here. Uh, but we don't have, uh, you know, our Uh, but we don't have, uh, you know, uh, it's one thing we can explore in our, um, in our employee policies. Uh, but we need to go down that road specifically that we signed up, so we can look into that as well.
You know, a, a, this is no reflection on, on personalities and sincerely, it's about the position. Um, it certainly should apply regards to the Board of Health. I can't think of any others off the top of my head. I don't know how much information primetime has.
No.
If it would be wise that positions in the Board of Health that have that kind of information have some type of agreement drawn out and signed. I know where I work, I, we all had to sign one too. Mrs. Gula.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, who are in the Board of Selectmen's Office concerned confidential employees, I don't know what that's described and defined in the policy book. For example, Mrs. Brady. And when I was at the university, every person considered to be under the president's promise, whether you were situated in Boston or on a campus, was automatically a confidential employee. It had nothing to do with HIPAA. It had nothing to do with anything else. It was structured and no confidential employee could belong to any union anywhere in the U N A S system. So certainly, Mrs. Brady is a confidential employee and I would assume, uh, if, uh, Leanne isn't, she should be. They, they don't belong to unions, but they have to be people at the top level working with, who are confidential. So I just bring that up. It's just not HIPAA.
Well, but the difference between that and HIPAA, as Mr. Galucci pointed out, is that there are serious penalties, fines, lawsuits to the damaged party for violation of HIPAA. And then that, that becomes the next question. If a member of the town violates HIPAA, is the town liable for their actions since they are an agent of the town?
The other departments of police and fire. And it clearly stays in our liability clauses. If somebody breaks the law and violation of HIPAA would be breaking the law.
Correct.
Anyone in those departments gave out information about somebody they transported or something that happened they witnessed that was, really should have been confidential unless it's what required the information.
Right.
Our liability is clear. You break the law, you're on your own.
Okay.
Okay, so it's not only the Board of Health.
Right.
And we spy anyone who provides emergency services. My point in mentioning other confidential employees is because of the, I will call it a strategic position.
Right.
Not necessarily HIPAA, but certainly, uh, the people that work in the Board of Selectmen's Office, I'm sure see information that could be of personal nature that might fall under them. And that's all I'm saying, but we do have these free departments that would be involved.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any further questions?
I don't have any.
Um,
We don't, um, actually have the minutes.
Okay, I was looking for him, I couldn't find him. Um, we need to take a motion to table the minutes. Since we don't have them.
I'll make a motion. Have we tabled the, the minutes?
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Chico?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Um, we will have our next meeting at six P M on November second. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I saw move, second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Chico?
Aye.
Karen? Chairman Hall?